Good evening. My name is Lisa Scott and I'm going to be your emcee and guide us through the evening's activities. Welcome to the mayor and the council and dignitaries, and welcome to all of you. I arrived in this beautiful city when I was seven years old, and my mother chose it because she said, "This feels like home," after coming from England. And it is home. It's home for us. I'd like to take an opportunity now to invite Hayley Borelli to the stage to sing the Canadian anthem. Please stand for that. Hayley is a young pop country artist from Burlington, Ontario, who is inspired by roots artists like Dolly Parton and Shania Twain, and more contemporary artists like Miranda Lambert and Gabby Barrett. Her clear and distinct voice delivers observations, inspiration, and encouragement about life, love, and the world. Hayley?
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True page with love in our lovers' common. God, embrace, et pourter les vers. Il s'est porté l'aqua. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillantes. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Veterans are the reason why we're able to vote for the candidates of our choosing in this past election. We thank all of the veterans and their families for their service to our community. It is because of their sacrifices that we have had the privilege of the freedom of religion, of education, and of self-expression. Thank you. I would now like to ask the mayor to come to call the meeting to order, please.
Good evening. I think this is the simplest meeting to call to order that there is in the calendar. So I would officially like to call this meeting to order. The regular meeting of council, special inauguration November 15, 2022, and turn it back to the clerk. Is that what I'm doing? No. That's not what I'm doing. I am... It's a good thing we have friendly people in the audience tonight. Going to introduce... Bring back Lisa Scott to introduce Guima Laforme.
It is now my pleasure to introduce to you Chief Laforme. Born and raised on Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, Chief Laforme has served his community for over 20 years. Being elected to council in 1999, Chief Laforme has participated in a number of committees and boards throughout his seven terms, served as a Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation councillor, including involvement with MN, CFN's Pan Am Games Secretariat. He is active on MN, CFN's treaty lands and territory, which encompasses... You don't want to hear anymore? Let me just do the last few words. Which encompasses 3.9 million acres of southern Ontario, not only as a chief, but as a notable storyteller, poet, and published author, Chief Laforme.[422.53][422.53](Applause)
Sorry about that. They actually sent me that and said, "Is there anything you wanted to change?" And then I made changes, and I thought I sent it back to them, but it's probably still in my outbox or inbox or somewhere out there.[444.03][444.03](Laughter) Ani, Bajiu, Nagani, Anishnebek, Inini, Stacey Laforme, Disney Kaz, Credit Dunjwa, Mainga Dodum, Mississauga, Nisnabie Dow. I was wondering how she was going to do that.[459.22][459.22](Laughter) I was just curious. Just curious. So before I start, I want to say, you know, I know we just had Remembrance Day the other day, but I find that all too often, we, you know, we dig up the memory of our fallen soldiers and those who've served us, and, you know, we go to their service, and we sing their praises, and then we go home and we come back again next year, and that's just not justified. So I think, you know, we should always be grateful and always remember the services, those who gave so much that we could be here today. Now, I want to read you a poem, and if there's those in the audience who do not like poetry, hearing for a rough time.[507.81][507.81](Laughter) So this one I wrote when I went to an AFN conference many years ago, and there were two very elderly soldiers, I forget, from World War I or World War II, it's been that long, talking about how different they were treated when they came home from other soldiers. And I wrote this from that perspective. But I was so surprised to find that when I read it to people, and I didn't tell them where it came from, many people from many countries associated with their own warriors who went, because I guess we have a history in the past of not always doing the best for our soldiers and our warriors. So I wrote this, and it's called, "I Love This Land." "You were and always shall be my brother. We were all the same color wrapped in the flag of this nation. My blood flowed as freely as yours. Mixed in the fields, one could not be distinguished from the other. Yet when we came home, when the nation's colors were removed, differences became apparent, not between you and I, God willing, never, but in the eyes of those for whom we laid down our lives. Oh, we still stood shoulder to shoulder in the parades, but the government thought that your life was more valuable than mine. So we were given land and property while I waited and waited. I know what you were given was not enough for what we endured, still it was much more than I. I am not envious of you, brother. I believe you deserve even more than you received. But it hurt me very badly. I'm not ashamed to say I cried, and why not? I bled, I died, I killed. Why does my country think I am unworthy? The enemy I fought could never be as cruel as the people I came back to embrace. I gave so much, lived through so much, and then you, you who I'd give all for, you pushed me aside as if I was inconsequential. I feel as if I have been spit upon by one honored. Do I feel good having to ask you for what should have been given long ago? No. In fact, I'm a little ashamed to ask for justice in this. For I never went to war for money, for glory, for reward. I went because it's the right thing to do, and God forgive me, I would go again. This may seem an old wound to you, but it is a wound that never heals, for it is a wound to my people's heart and soul, an insult to our pride, and we deserve so much better, especially from you." So I just...[671.43][671.43](Applause) I raise that because we're always learning about the history and the differences and what happened in the past, and we're always trying to fix that. But this is going to sound... This may seem strange, but I want to do one more for you, and it's called, "Remember," and it's for all our warriors, and it's to show just how much I... What happened was, I was at the gym one day because I had a job there, believe it or not, many years ago. And I was married at the time, I had a wife back then too, and believe it or not.[714.43][714.43](Laughter) And she said, "Oh, I promised so-and-so that you'd write a poem for Remembrance Day." And I said, "Okay." And this was November 10th. I said, "Okay, I'll try." And so this is what I wrote, and if you're a writer, you know that sometimes it takes a long time to come up with what you want to say. But this poem took me five minutes, and I really like it. It's called, "Remember." "To all those who've gone before, to all the people that went to war, to the men and women who faced death, to those who will never again draw breath, to the mothers and fathers whose children gave all, to the husbands and wives who's made answer the call, to the child who faced life on her own, to everyone who talks to a name on a stone. No medal or ribbon can repay all that we owe. The parade and the applause are not enough, and we know. How do you thank someone for everything you have and everything you are? Without you, never could we accomplish so much or come so far. I want to say thank you, but no words are enough for what we went through. There is one promise that I can give, one oath I shall never break for as long as I live. I'll remember that we owe all to you, a person, a people, I never even knew. So I wanted to say that I wanted to wish the new... The new-old council? The new...[805.19][805.19](Laughter) Guys, how are you referring to yourself? The incumbent, you know, these guys. Congratulate them and hope that in the future we can be on a journey of partnerships and friendships and figure out how we move forward. You know, I tell people when we're talking about working with partners and building relations, you know, it's all about understanding, respect, and reciprocity. See, we don't come with our handout like this and say, "What can you give us?" We come with a handout like this and say, "What can we do to make things better?" And so in that venue, I hope that we can work together and move things forward for not only Indigenous people who live in this area, but also for non-Indigenous, because that's what we're all meant to do. We've got to all strive to make things just a little better every day. Now, I want to offer you a... I want to offer you a prayer as you begin your time on council. And it's, "We give thanks to the Creator for allowing this gathering. We ask that He guide us and forgive us when we falter and disappoint. For though we aspire to greatness, we are after all only human. Grant us a clear mind, a pure heart, and courage. A clear mind to make intelligent, well-thought-out decisions. A pure heart to make decisions that are filled with personal bias and desire, and the courage to use both, a clear mind and a pure heart in our lives. Let us set aside small differences. Let us concentrate on real issues. Let us not be bogged down in rhetoric. Let us live each day with a feeling of accomplishment and pride. Most importantly, let us remember, we are not adversaries nor are we enemies. We share a similar past, a kindred spirit, and a common heritage. We must always remember the real reason we gather, to do the right thing for our people, our children, our future." So I know I had 10 minutes, and I'm probably at 10 minutes by now, so I'll wrap it up. But I have to mention my shirt because I know you're in the audience thinking, "Darn that man looks good."[952.81][952.81](Laughter) So there's a story behind the shirt, but I won't go into details because I don't have time, but I'll tell you that I was in a store one day and a man said to me, "That's a nice shirt." I said, "Thank you." He went on to say, "It takes a special kind of man to wear a shirt like that."[970.23][970.23](Laughter) So I chuckled and I thought about it, but it reminded me that when I was young, I would have been too afraid to dress like this, too afraid of what others would say or what I thought they would say. But the truth is, we should never have to change to fit into society. The world around us should adapt to embrace our uniqueness, and that's a fundamental principle that we have to remember, and that's about inclusion. You know, it's about welcoming diversity. It's about becoming... Because diversity is how we become better tomorrow than we are today. And I think, you know, given the city that we're in and the diversity of the people here and how we come together, it's a good lesson. So I have to leave the stage now, or all the men in the audience will be thinking, "I can pull that shirt off."[1014.23][1014.23](Laughter) And I don't want us all to be dressed this way. Make good and great, good luck and fortune.[1022.56][1022.56](Applause)
Thank you, Chief Laforme, for those words of wisdom and sharing love with us. Thank you. I'd now like to ask Tim Camiso, City Manager, to make some remarks.
Thank you very much, Lisa. I do believe actually that I'm going to ask the mayor, I think she wants to say something. So I'll step aside, mayor.[1063.58][1063.58](Laughter)
That is a nice shirt, by the way. I neglected to do a land acknowledgement right at the beginning. That's how nervous I am, which is odd for me, but it just means this is a really special and important night. So I do want to do the land acknowledgement before we proceed anymore. And we have been in dialogue with members of... With Indigenous residents here in Burlington, our staff, and thinking about doing more than just give a land acknowledgement, to make it personal and to make a few remarks instead of just reciting what our land acknowledgement is. We have also had some suggested wording changes to our land acknowledgement. So you get to hear it here first, some new words that have been given to us, and then I will make some remarks about what the land acknowledgement means for me and I think for all of council. Burlington, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. Our lands spanning from Lake Ontario to the Niagara Escarpment are steeped in Indigenous history. We are fortunate in Burlington to have beautiful natural areas, such as our waterfront. Water was an integral part of Indigenous people's lives and culture. It helped provide sustenance through fishing, offered transportation to other areas of the land, was a habitat for animals, and provided all beings with a necessity to survive. The waterfront continues to be an integral part of our city and is beloved by all residents, both Indigenous and non-Indigenous. We must continue to be responsible stewards of the water and all parts of the land and treat it with the utmost respect in order to keep it safe for generations to come. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is part of the treaty lands and territories of the Mississaugas of the Credit. One of the reasons my family is here in Burlington is because of our city's spectacular land and water. My husband, who is here tonight in the front row, and I used to drive from Toronto, where we were living at the time, to hike the land of Mount Nemo and the lands and trails around our beautiful waterfront. And we decided we wanted to be closer to this land and water to raise our three children here. So we came to Burlington in 2000. And I'm also struck that what we're doing here tonight, swearing in a new democratically-elected council, is defined by land. It is defined by each ward which has a boundary based on land, and the city as a whole is defined through our land. I'm so grateful for this privilege to serve on the land with my council colleagues and to serve with you, the people of this land. And I also acknowledge that though I, as a white woman, got the right to vote and run for elected office in 1918, actually, the right to vote in 1918, the right to stand for office in 1919, the Indian Act did not allow Indigenous women to vote in their own banned councils until 1952. Indigenous men had to give up their Indian status to vote, and that meant rejecting their own language, culture, and traditions and leaving the reserve. And it wasn't until 1960 that Indigenous men and women equally had the right to vote without restrictions. We know with voter turnout being so low this election, we continue to have work to do as a city and a country to encourage everyone to exercise that hard-won right to vote and to repair the legacy of damage towards Indigenous residents. And I know every single member of council equally joins me in that commitment to do
So my name is Tim Camiso. I love being the city manager for the city of Burlington, and I say that, and it's an honor to be up on the stage with everybody. I don't usually say speeches. I usually just answer questions. And usually they're very hard, so sometimes I hope I get the right answer with council. But I just want to acknowledge, it's a pleasure for me to really be here and say a few words. So my remarks are short, but I wrote them down just so that I'd get this right. So first of all, I want to sincerely congratulate everyone on your reelection on October the 24th. As I said, it's a pleasure working with you. And so doing, as city manager, I also want to acknowledge our city clerk, Kevin Arjun, and the entire team for their great work in really putting on the election and right up until tonight. So I very much appreciate the opportunity to make a few remarks at this event, which was very important. And it's the inaugural meeting of Burlington City Council that'll be in office for the next four years. But if you would indulge me, I'd just like to take a little stroll down memory lane. So my first inaugural council with the city of Burlington, Burlington Council, was in 1988. So I've been around. And Burlington has been my home, it's where our children were born and raised. But I remember vividly that inaugural meeting because it was my first day of working for the city of Burlington. And at that time, Mayor Rowley Byrd, some of you may remember him, he was finishing up his last term as mayor. Back then, there were three-year terms, and I think that was his fourth term. There was another council member that was elected that night. It was actually a person that many of you know and cherish, it was Walter Malkovich, who became the mayor in 1991, and I served with him as well. You know, these are memories that I have just very fondness for. In fact, actually, the city manager at the time, Michael Fenn, still lives in Burlington and still stays in touch, so I think that tells you about the people that have worked for the city. So my comments, I think I want to make on behalf of our entire staff team, and many of them are here tonight, and I thank them for being here. I'll be concise, but I'll be heartfelt. I will say that we are all truly honored and feel privileged to again serve this city council. And in so doing, all the members, all the residents, businesses of our community, this great community we call Burlington. In the past term, under council's leadership and through a lot of great strategic decision-making, in my view, we have advanced the city's interests in the future. And that's really what we do. We make decisions today that make Burlington better tomorrow for all of you and everybody and your families. And those that want to choose to live in Burlington, this is the greatest city, no question, in Canada. And I think we should be clear about that. And we should also be clear that in wanting... In being the greatest city in Canada, you know, we strive to be the best-run city in Canada. And that's really, I think, falls back, you know, with council and the relationship that it has with the staff team, myself. So I just want to recognize that and thank council. So as city manager, I'll just end by saying, it remains my greatest honor to serve council at your will and to do so always leading a dedicated and talented city staff team. So thank you very much for the opportunity.[1601.16][1601.16](Applause)
Thank you, Tim. I would now like to invite the city clerk, Kevin Arjun, to the podium, please.
Really hear that rustle of paper? All right. So just good evening. It is my duty as the city clerk and the returning officer for the municipal and school board elections held on October 24, 2022, within the city of Burlington, to declare the following persons elected to Burlington City Council. For the office of mayor, Mary Ann Mead Ward. For the office of Ward 1, Kelvin Galbraith. For the office of Ward 2, Lisa Kearns. For the office of Ward 3, Rory Nissan. For the office of Ward 4, Shauna Stolte. For the office of Ward 5, Paul Sharman. For the office of Ward 6, Angelo Bentivenia.[1676.88][1676.88](Applause) We will now have the mayor and council-elect complete their oath of office. Tonight, we are joined by Justice Mark Curtis, a justice of the peace for Halton, who will administer their oaths. Council-elect, as I call your name, approach the table to complete your oath, then stand in place for a photo and return to your seat. Justice Curtis will also offer an expression of congratulations.
Good evening, and it's a great pleasure to be here. We're not encouraged as judicial officers to say too much.[1733.53][1733.53](Laughter) We don't have an opinion.[1736.83][1736.83](Laughter) But I know how these special people feel, for I have been in their place a number of times as a city councillor myself and as a deputy mayor. So I appreciate this privilege, mayor, that you have invited me through your clerk to be here tonight. It's wonderful to hear everything about the other city in Halton, Burlington, as I come from Milton.[1772.08][1772.08](Laughter) But in the spirit of the chief who shared his poetry with you, which was very touching and very meaningful, I want to share some lyrics from a Canadian writer who lives in Halton, who wrote about Burlington in the spirit of these words. I love this... I love this town. I love its people. As I travel down each street, it's the faces that I meet. I love this town. In the humble and the proud, in the quiet and the loud, I love this town. We are more than buildings, more than streets and fair. This town has a spirit that I'm honored to share. I love this town. Congratulations to you, and may your service be fruitful and may the other variants of the world that are out there, besides the pandemic, the stresses of your job, and all that you're going to be embracing, that you will have the courage and strength to make decisions wisely for the people of Burlington. Thank you.
I'll now call upon mayor-elect Mary Ann Mead Ward.
I, Mary Ann Mead Ward, having been elected or appointed to the office of mayor in the municipality of Burlington, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will bear, be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
I, Kelvin Galbraith, have been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Burlington, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will faithfully, I will be faithful and here true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath.
I, Lisa Kearns, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Burlington, do solemnly promise and declare I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Act, Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
I, Rory Nissan, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Burlington, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it, it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Councillor, if you would be so kind to raise your right hand as you give your oath today.
Thank you. I, Shauna Stolti, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Burlington, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations, councillor. I now call upon Ward 5, Paul Sharman.
I, Paul Sharman, have been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Burlington. I do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and I will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or an improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations, councillor.
Thank you very much.
I now call upon Ward 6, Angelo Bentavania.
I, Angelo Bentavania, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Burlington, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiances to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I make it this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations, councillor. Thank you, Justice Curtis. City of Burlington, it is my utmost privilege to present your 2022 through to 2026 Burlington City Council.
I would now like to ask Mary Ann Mead Ward, our mayor, to come to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Bonsoir à tous, tant si mieux te cosse. On behalf of all of my colleagues on city council, I would like to thank you for joining us tonight in person or online. It was great to see your face, councillor Stolti, on the big screen and have you join us as we are officially sworn in to the new term of council. I would also like to once again honor and acknowledge our veterans who are here with us this evening and all of those who fought for our freedoms and never came back. Without you, none of us would be here. So please join me in another round of applause for their service and sacrifice. That deserves a whoop, yeah? I know we are all honored and excited to be back. This is the giddy-up, let's-go council, and with all of us returning, we can dive right back into the business of the city without skipping a beat. And there are many priorities that you have put before us. But before we get to that, I'd like to take you back to where we've been, because that has set the foundation for who we are as a council and where we're going. Cast your mind back to 2018. You elected a new mayor and five new councillors to change the plans for development downtown that would have allowed up to 30 more high-rises, including a high-rise in the middle of historic Village Square. That plan was on its way to being approved by Halton Region. Four days after we were inaugurated, the plan would have been eligible for appeal, taking decision-making out of our hands, and leaving it with the developer-friendly Ontario Lands Tribunal. On day three, we received notice that Halton Region was pausing the plan to review several items of concern, and that gave us time to reset the downtown plan. So we got to work. We froze development for a year and we did our, redid our official plan. But we needed the province's help to remove both the major transit station area and urban growth center designations downtown. Both the MTSA and UGC were used to justify overdevelopment. But moving an MTSA or a UGC had never been done before in Ontario. We were told it could never be done, that it was impossible, that it was giving false hope, or worse, to even suggest it. And then we achieved the impossible. Oh, yeah. In 2021, the province formally agreed to shift both the MTSA and the UGC to the Burlington Go Station. And that is all because of you. You all deserve a huge part of the credit because we couldn't have done it without you. Your advocacy and your support to make this change helped convince the province to do what it had never done before or since. So why am I telling you this story? It shows you what kind of council we have been and will be to face the challenges that are ahead. And those challenges are equally daunting, some would say nearly impossible to solve too. As head of council, along with my team of colleagues, we will lead with five principles in mind. First, we will advocate for you. This story shows how much of what we do continues to be controlled by the province. We will continue to be strong advocates for our community, we will collaborate with the province where we can, and we will challenge and criticize when we have to. For example, the change is coming with Bill 23. That bill will erode the role of Halton Region and conservation authorities, permit new development on the green belt, and download the costs of growth from for-profit developers to you, the taxpayers. We will fight that, and I will fight that as We will fight that, and I will fight that as a member of the Large Urban Caucus of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and Ontario's big city mayors. AMO, OBCM, Halton Regional Councillors, which includes all of your Burlington City Council, have all asked the province to pause this devastating legislation and work with us as an equal partner to achieve the right type of housing in the right place. We will also continue to advocate for reform and ultimately abolition of the Ontario Land Tribunal. This remains the official and unanimous position of Halton Regional Council based on a motion I co-sponsored in 2019. The OLT can overrule democratically-elected councils and our planning staff and you, members of our community. It is undemocratic, inefficient, slows the delivery of housing, and adds millions in costs to redo the work already done by councils, our professional planning staff, and our community. And it works against the goal we all share for building more affordable housing faster. Second, we will base our decisions on solid planning and evidence. This story shows what is possible when we take the time to do our homework and build a case for support that can't be refused. Three, we will work with our staff. There are 1,038 full-time and over 700 part-time staff who deliver city services across 37 service areas. That includes parks and recreation, arts and culture, transit and cycling, roads and parks maintenance, capital works, environment, bylaw enforcement, animal control, fire protection, and many more. Our staff continued to deliver these services throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, finding new ways to do so, just as so many members of our community and businesses had to do. So please, let's take a moment to thank them and our city manager, Tim Camiso, who leads our team, for their service to you. Number four principle: We will aim high. This story shows that nothing is impossible with commitment and hard work and perhaps a bit of good fortune. So we will set big goals. We won't be afraid to break new ground. We will not be deterred by the naysayers and the critics who say something can't be done just because it's never been done before. If something is worth doing, we'll try and do our best. We'll do our homework, and we'll pursue opportunities to make our city better, not just for our term of office, but for future generations. We will aim for the stars, because even if we come up a little bit short, we will achieve far more for you than if we aim for the ground and hit it. And finally, we will do all of this together with you. This story shows that it takes all of us to achieve results, council working with our staff and working with you, the members of our community. We will seek new ways to involve you in the decisions that affect you. We will not always agree on the best way forward, nor should we. We will honour and respect the diversity of perspectives on our council, among staff, and in our community. We will treat each other with respect when we differ, and we will keep the best interests of you, our community, at the centre of all of our discussions. We will do this together as a council team. So to that end, I am pleased to announce the formation of deputy mayor portfolios for each member of council. These assignments, which are similar to minister-level appointments at the federal and provincial government level, will help us make best use of the diverse experience and background of each member of council. And these portfolios are also aligned with our Vision to Focus strategic plan, our upcoming master plan reviews, and council priorities. I'll give you just a few highlights, and there will be a lot more details on what these roles mean in coming days and weeks. Ward One councillor Kelvin Galbraith will be the deputy mayor for business and red tape production. This builds on his extensive experience as a business owner. The portfolio will include reviewing the progress of the Red Tape/Red Carpet Task Force, those meetings are already happening this week, speeding up delivery of permits, we know we have more work to do there, and cutting red tape for all businesses and our rural area. We want to continue to ensure a robust agricultural economy, and this council also remains unanimously committed to protecting our rural area and not expanding our urban boundary. We will not support sprawling development onto farmland. Ward Two councillor Lisa Kearns will be the deputy mayor for community engagements and partnerships. This builds on her experience in residence groups even before being elected, as well as her professional experience in corporate stakeholder management and her Institute of Corporate Directors governance designation. The portfolio will include reviewing our current community engagement models, including our advisory committee structure with a view to community capacity building. When voter turnout this election is at an all-time low, we'll work to ensure that people feel included in our decisions and understand the importance of local government in their day-to-day lives. It will also include liaising with our partner agencies, boards, and committees on governance, and working with the deputy mayor of Recreation and Community Services to enhance community funding opportunities and sponsorships. Ward Three councillor Rory Nissan will be deputy mayor for the environment. This builds on his role as a board member of Conservation Halton, bringing the Climate Change Emergency Declaration to this last term of council, and his advocacy on transit. The portfolio will include implementation of our climate action plans and our integrated mobility plans, which include transit, cycling, and walking, and restarting discussions with the school boards on free transit for students, which was put on hold during COVID. Ward Four councillor Shauna Stolti, who we know is watching, will be deputy mayor for housing. This will build on her passion for attainable housing and her experience chairing the Community Working Group on Housing this past term. The portfolio will include implementation of our housing strategy, which includes affordable and attainable housing, liaison with Halton Region on assisted housing, and assisting with process improvements and legislative changes to get more housing built faster. Ward Five councillor Paul Sharman will be deputy mayor for strategy and budgets. This builds on his extensive experience as a professional accountant and international instructor for strategy and business process improvements. The portfolio will include oversight of implementation of our Vision to Focus strategic plan, development of key performance indicators, and progress reports, so we know how we're doing, and guidance on process improvements and culture change across departments, and finally, his advice and assistance with multi-year budget preparation. Finally, Ward Six councillor Angelo Bentivania will be deputy mayor for Recreation and Community Services. This builds on his decades of volunteerism in our community, including with the hospital, sports clubs, and the Gift of Giving Back, Canada's largest youth-led food drive, often imitated but never duplicated. This also builds on his work on our Accessibility Advisory Committee and the Inclusivity Advisory Committee. This portfolio will include involvement in the review and implementation of our Recreation and Cultural Master Plan, which will occur this term. This review will determine our park and community amenity needs going forward. It will include providing links and support to the charitable sector and promoting community pride and inclusion, which includes new ways to support all of our diverse communities and cultures within our city and region, including funding and sponsorship opportunities. I look forward to closely collaborating with each deputy mayor to deliver on the community's priorities as we face the significant challenges ahead. And I do feel very lucky to have such a diverse team with such incredible skills and experience to bring to the table for you. So please join me in welcoming and supporting them in these new roles. The first major task of this council will be approving our 2023 budget, and I can tell you, it will be an incredibly challenging budget, balancing the ongoing impacts of COVID, inflationary pressures, and the needs of a growing community where city services and amenities have not kept up to growth. We will continue to seek federal and provincial funding to offset COVID impacts, which are close to $4 million. Our budget is also made more challenging by the proposed Bill 23 downloading of costs of growth from developers to taxpayers, and that reduces our ability to collect sufficient fees for parkland and development charges. There's currently an online survey, getinvolvedburlington.ca, I encourage all of you to take it, and watch for dates for our upcoming budget telephone town hall and public budget meetings. Additional priorities for our term include promoting reasonable growth at the right place. We know that will occur around our go-stations, aging retail plazas, there will be opportunities in the new year for consultation, so please get involved. Implementing our climate action and attainable housing and integrated mobility plans. Adding new community centres and parks to keep up with the needs of our growing community. This includes securing ownership of LaSalle Park, currently owned by Hamilton, buying any surplus school lands for community uses, for example Leicester B Pearson, if offered for sale by the school board. Opening up Robert Bateman High School as the largest community centre in the city, with Brock University, an expanded library, Halton District School Board Adult Education, Tech Place, our pool, and community rooms, and even more community space. We'll be consulting with you in 2023 about what you'd like to see there. And we also look forward to opening a new Skyway Arena with an NHL-sized rink, warm viewing area, community meeting rooms, indoor walking track, and all with net-zero energy impact. That saves you money and is better for the environment, too. We also are committed to protecting our rural area from urban expansion and cutting red tape for agricultural businesses. And finally, promoting community pride, so everyone feels welcome and included in the life of our city. In particular, we know we need to do more to advance truth and reconciliation with urban Indigenous residents here in Burlington. Though we have made progress as a city, there is more that we can do to honour the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's Ten Principles of Reconciliation and implement the Ninety-Four Calls to Action, especially as they relate to municipalities. The first principle is reconciliation as relationship. To advance that, I am honoured to announce this evening the formation of a Burlington Indigenous Talking Circle. I will come together with urban Indigenous residents here in Burlington to foster dialogue and relationship building, to help our city advance actions on reconciliation. To conclude, this is only a small snapshot of the work ahead. None of the achievements that we've had over the last term are the work of one person, and we can't do any of the work of the next term alone either. Our accomplishments take all of us working together to get things done. Council, staff, community leaders, and government partners, we are committed to doing our best for you and with you, our city staff, and all our community partners. And we will do so with courage, with persistence, and with a view to the next generation, not the next term of office. I also want to thank all of the family members who are here tonight. I want to thank my husband, Pete, who's in the front row. I want to thank all of the spouses and partners and children and supporters of every member of council here tonight. We know that we couldn't do it without you and that you loan us to the community for good periods of time. So please join me in thanking all of our family members for the support they give us so we can serve you. I will leave you with one final thought. It's a quote from former United States President Teddy Roosevelt, which is on a poster in my office at City Hall, "And it inspires me to keep going when the going gets tough, and it will get tough, and it has been tough." It goes like this: "The credit belongs to the one who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes up short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, who spends themselves in a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if we fail, at least we fail while daring greatly." Thank you for choosing us to serve you. Merci, bonsoir, à la prochaine fois, mi guace, miyo tipiska.
Thank you. Lots of plans, great, great goals, and thank you for serving your community, each and every one of you. We truly appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like to take a moment now to introduce White Eagle Stonefish. White Eagle is an Indigenous woman who lives here in Burlington. She's a healer, she's an elder, and she is a teacher, I have learned in the short time that I have known her. It is important for all of us to lean in and really learn and understand, because inclusion requires us to lean in and to learn the truth. And so, I would like to invite White Eagle Stonefish to come to the stage and to share a lesson. Thank you.
Well, that's great. Anyways, good evening. I would like to start off by saying it is an honour and a privilege that I find myself standing here at the inauguration of the mayor, Maryanne Mead-Ward, Ward One councillor Kelvin Galbraith, Ward Two councillor Lisa Kearns, Ward Three councillor Rory Nissan, Ward Four councillor Shauna Stolti, Ward Five councillor Paul Sharman, and Ward Six councillor Angelo Benvene, Benvene. You know it. I must, I must say that this is my first time at an inauguration of anybody, and I am happy to be part of a community of leaders who have shown that they care and want to help people in their everyday lives. I am looking forward to seeing what you will do and create for Burlington together over the next four years. Since the news of the 215 shoes in relation to the residential school system, which brought the true history of Canada to the light, we, the Indigenous people, have been busy using our voices to educate the wonderful people of Burlington. And I know that we are excited to create more events, share more of our rich culture, and make more memories with the city of Burlington. This past summer, I was fortunate to be able to work alongside some wonderful people who helped to see that Maryanne Mead-Ward got re-elected for mayor. What an experience! I had never worked on a campaign before or had anything to do with politics. And I know, I know what you are saying to yourself, it's only municipal, but let me assure you, to me, it's politics. I come from a place where there was absolutely no reason for me to trust anyone political. But Mary, but Maryanne and this fine council have proven to me that there is hope for people like me. The urban Indigenous have a place here and are lucky to call Burlington home. As I have been recognised as a healer and elder, I would like now to set intentions for the next four years. for the next four years. This here is a swan feather, and in our culture, if you are given a feather, it is an honor. But when it comes from Creator, meaning that you just find it out in nature, you are, you are being blessed from the highest, which is Creator. So for some of you who already know me, you know that you must uncross your legs, uncross your arms, and I am going to set some intentions for the next four years. We ask and intend to create a sacred space. We ask and intend that those beings of the highest whitest light come be present with us now. We ask and intend that those beings of the dark and of the dark energies be banned from our experience now. We ask and intend that our ancestors of the highest whitest light come be present with us now. We ask and intend that those ancestors of the dark and of the dark energies be banned from our experience now with love. We ask and intend for white buffalo calf women to come and be present with us now. We ask and intend to create a sacred space for the purpose, for these seven fine people on council, that they may be able to speak their truth, that they may be able to help Burlington along in their struggles, in their laughter, in their, in their, in their growth. May they come from a place of love, peace, and joy, and may they help each other to grow in their place on council. And even though they may not always get along, may they find that love that is within each of all seven of these people. May they know that every single one of them are brothers and sisters. And they are brothers and sisters of Creator. And may they come to know that they are brothers and sisters of all four directions, of all four colors that reside here within Burlington. May you, Creator, keep these wonderful people, keep them healthy, keep them joyful, keep them peaceful, so that they may serve their time on council for the next four years. And may us, the people of Burlington, come and support them within the energy of love, peace, and joy. I ask all of this Creator, and I ask that any grievances and any sicknesses that reside within this, within this room, I ask that it leaves through my physical, my mental, my emotional, and my spiritual, and my cellular memories now. And so it is, and so it is, and so it is. Ahaï. Aho. Chimiguaich.
Thank you, White Eagle. I would now like to invite Daniya Thurman, accompanied by Faith Breen. Daniya is the executive director of Food for Kids Halton and a professional singer. She has traveled throughout North America, and Faith is a student in grade 12 at Burlington Central High School. Daniya is the vocal director for an upcoming Burlington Central musical, and Faith is the lead. They're going to be performing "You're Not Alone" by Canadian artist Alison Russell.
Hey, my little little star. How bright you are. Anywhere you go, you're not alone. Rocks and bats and angel waves. Every little shining thing. Anywhere you go, you're not alone. You're the north star in the countless, always finding sun and wonders. Anywhere you go, you're not alone. Hey, my little little star. How bright you are. Anywhere you go, you're not alone. Wish you that you keep on sorrow and harm. Now the best is here for long. You're not alone. In the great old circle, all the ones who came before you. All their strength is yours now. You're not alone. Sarrows in the morning, rose and dust. Singing with your daddy, we have love. 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 We have love.
Thank you. So we are at the, almost at the end of our evening, but before we say goodnight, what we want to do now is let's give a big round of applause for the best city in the world and for our town council for 2022 and 2026. And can I now ask Mayor Mary Ann Mead Ward to come back up to the podium?
I know I'm standing between you and the reception, so we'll make it quick. I have a motion to enact and pass bylaw number 802022, to, being a bylaw, to confirm the proceedings at our inaugural meeting of council held Tuesday, November 15, 2022, being read a first, second, and third time. And all those in favor, please raise your hand, and councillor Stolti, give us a whoop or a yes, or, I'm assuming it's a yes. All right. Hands in the air. Any opposed? And that motion does carry, and just before we, I call for the motion to adjourn, I would like to add my thanks on behalf of all of city council, to everyone who participated in tonight's event, to make it an incredible evening. Lisa Scott, our wonderful, where'd she go, emcee for tonight, his worship Judge Mark Curtis, thank you for being here and for your words. Chief Guima Stacy LaForme, thank you so much for being here. White Eagle, yes, please applaud. White Eagle, for setting the intentions and setting us on a path to success. Thank you. Haley Verrell, our homegrown talent, Knows No Limits, amazing singer for the National Anthem. Daniya Thurman and Faith Breen, thank you so much for that incredible song in two of Canada's official languages. Jeff Bourne, our incredible saxophonist, who will be out with us again as we go and have something to eat and drink together. Of course, our always incredible and amazing Burlington Teen Tour Band, thank you so much for being here. And finally Burlington Green, who is helping us to green tonight's event. I now have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and councillor Stolti, give us a good whoop.
Woo-hoo!
There she is. All right. Any opposed? And hearing none, that does carry unanimously. Great work, everyone. Please join us in the reception afterward. Our meeting is now adjourned.